On the call, committee of the whole meeting for Monday, April 5th, 2021 to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gaffino.
Here.
Trustee Lowry.
Here.
Trustee Gateley.
Here.
Trustee Carroll.
Here.
Trustee Martinez.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
All right, great, thank you. Audience comments?
I do not see any mayor.
Thank you, sir. Trustee comments? Okay, discussion, first item, website redesign update, Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one on the agenda, as it says, is the website redesign update. Basically, this goes back several months ago, the village started to redo their, our website. Part of it was because of the backend system and how to maintain the website. We were able to get a very reasonable price to also change the aesthetics of the, what the pages look like. And we wanted to make them look more up to date, professional, and easy to use. So with that being said, I am going to turn this over to Natalie Stevens, who did most of the work. We did talk to the board last year, just to get some updates on, and some feedback, and we, we put some of those, the feedback from the board into this current design. So with that, Natalie's going to walk you through the before and afters.
All right, so good evening, everyone. I put together a couple slides here that are going to show some of the big changes from the front end view. So David, if you want to go ahead and click to the first one. Obviously, the homepage is the first page you'll see when you visit our website. On the left is our current design. It is a little more cluttered and old. On the right side is new version. It's a modern take. It's incorporating our two main village colors. So we have a nice cohesive, modern theme. You can see right there at the top, we have several buttons. Those are similar to the ones we had on the old design, but we updated them so they are more useful to residents. And as the village board requested, we do have a village board button. So everyone will go straight to the village board landing page from clicking there. On the news items, got a big update. They all have pictures now associated with the four first main items. So they're a little more engaging for readers to click through. And the biggest change is the event calendar. Right now, on the current one, you literally just click the button that says your calendar. So this is just a very updated, more modern take on how it looks, and we're very pleased with how it all came together. Next slide, Dave. One of the biggest things that we have been working on, on our end, is the dropdown menus. If you look at the current version, there's a bunch of tabs at the top of the screen. And when you hover over them, you get this really, really long, convoluted kind of dropdown. That makes it very hard to see. That's actually the homepage of our current website. It completely covers it up with the menu. On the right, you can see a much more cleaned up menu that is easy to navigate. Everything that has been able to has been condensed, like other public work departments, now incorporates, like streets and sun pumps. So everything is much more cohesive for the person who's looking. So that is our dropdown menu organization. Also, to that note, as you can see, we had a bunch of topics at the top that has been, again, cleaned up. The biggest changes we added, how do I feature? A lot of those websites incorporate this, where we have brought in several items that show easy navigation around the site. As you can see, the village board got a little shadow at the very top of the Get Village Info. We are also highlighting like our livestream camera currently on our website. It's very hidden. Some of the other big things is on our current website, we had a residence and a community button. It didn't really make sense that they were split, so they all got condensed into community here. And then, as I already identified, those buttons at the bottom, we did switch them up. We actually have the ability now on the backend to very, very easily add more buttons, remove buttons. So come with North Aurora days, you can put a North Aurora days button up there, whoever's trying to direct people to certain pages. It's a very simple process to get a lot of attention directly on that page. The calendar, as I said, on the homepage, on the new one, you can see we actually have an actual calendar that residents can view. The setup of each is very similar for the most part. The new one, though, is more modeled after Outlook, which a lot more people are familiar with. And its big feature is it has a search for events button. You can see at the top, so people are trying to search for spring cleanup or North Aurora days. They can easily just type that into the bar and get straight to the item rather than having to flip through. This new version also has the ability to list by a list option and go by day. So it's a little easier to browse. This is our service request form. We have several forms on the website. We actually have a brand new one, which is the Contact Us form. So residents will be able to contact departments directly if they have an issue. So those messages will go to specific department heads or members of them. But for the purpose of this, it was to show the difference in how the forms look. Previously, it was a long list, and you could see all the options. Now, when you click a specific bubble, you'll be able to direct, free select that item. And it just looks cleaned up for the residents and a little more modern approach. And then this one, we are very excited about. We incorporated accordion style design. So on the new one, you can see those little arrows there. When you click them, they will open the items. That way, you do not have an endless scrolling page. As you can see on the left, you literally just scroll and scroll and scroll until you reach the bottom. This one, we're able to very nicely condense items. It's not just village board packets. We have it on FBQs and bids and pretty much anything that used to be a scrolling page has now been really well cleaned up, and it's much easier for the residents to view. And on the backend side, it's much easier for us to make edits. You can easily access any page. They can edit directly from that page. Uploading images and PDFs has become much simpler. The system does not lag. And the best part is we have a lot more control over this website, where, like I said, we can change buttons out. We can modify every menu item we want to, add dropdowns, and it's very, very useful. And I can see it working really well for us, so we can make sure we always have the most up to date content for the village. Any questions?
Very good.
Real good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it was really nice. It just, like you say, it has a cleaner, more modern look. It certainly seems more user friendly, so.
Yes, that is what we're hoping. Thank you.
Yeah, that looks amazing. It looks incredibly simple. And, you know, I, I really like how everything is more simplified in there. You know, the looks and the photos that you picked, they also have a nice harmony with everything. You know, it was an excellent job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's good.
All right, very good. Thank you. Natalie, great job.
Thank you, Mark.
Number two, tip redevelopment, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick thing. So with that, what we'll do is we'll end up going over it one more time, kind of going, looking for spelling errors and, and links to make sure they all work. But we plan to actually post that new website, hopefully this week. So we'll let everybody know when it goes live. Item number two on the agenda is the Tip Redevelopment Plan Draft Report. As the village board is aware, we're in the process of creating what we're calling the United Tip District. That is essentially taking our three existing tip districts, which would be the North Lincoln Way, the Lincoln Way, and the Sperry Tips, and combining them into one new united tip with the addition of a few parcels. It also would leave a section of the current Route 31 tip south of By 88 to, to retire on its own in the next five years or so. In the meantime, there's a specific process by statute you have to follow to incorporate a new tip district. One of those items that we have to do is we have to post, we have to basically approve an ordinance that talks about when we're going to set the public hearing for the actual establishment of the tip district. That, by our timeline, is going on April 19th. Before you have that approval, you have to post your tip redevelopment plan 10 days earlier. You have to have it available for view at the village hall. So in that regard, we need to actually have the tip plan done by April 9th. It's a tight window to keep on our timeline, which is to get the tip up and running by July. To do that, we received our draft report from Tuscan Associates, the consulting firm that is doing the tip district establishment for us. And it is not 100% complete, but we thought, since this was the last meeting before that April 9th, that we would bring it to the board and included it in your packet. Really, for tonight, I just wanted to present it so that you, you see it, and that if you had any questions about the new tip, tonight would be a good time to ask, ask any questions. Myself and Mike Tote are available to answer any of those questions. But ultimately, if you look at the redevelopment plan, it essentially just breaks down the project area into segments, including future land use designations and goals to improve infrastructure, goals to improve certain properties. For instance, I'm reading directly from it right now. If you look at page 10, it says, "The purpose of the redevelopment plan," and it gives bullet points, "would be eradicate blighted conditions and institute conservation measures, remove and alleviate adverse conditions by encouraging private investment of underutilized and vacant properties, which will strengthen the economy, tax base, business environment and living environment, improve existing public utilities and infrastructure within the area, and enhancing the overall quality of the business environment in North Aurora." That's essentially it in a nutshell, right there. Those four bullet points are what the goals of the tip would be. So with that, does anybody have any questions about the new tip as we continue to move forward in this process?
This, the boundary lines have not changed at all since we last discussed this particular topic. Is that correct?
Correct. The United Tip, the boundary lines are the same that we presented previously.
Okay.
I think it looks like a good comprehensive plan in areas that, that need it, when I read through it.
You know, it's interesting you mention that, Trustee Salazar, because the, the plan actually does use our comprehensive plan that we did a few years ago, and it uses a lot of the goals that were set in that plan for Route 31's corridor and implements them as our goals for revitalizing that area.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, Steve, thank you. Item three, humane pet sales, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three is, this is in regards to, we had the village board brought up the fact that Naperville had recently passed the Humane Pet Ordinance, and the city of Aurora was looking at doing the same. They're still in that process. Mike Tote is going to walk through, basically, what a humane pet ordinance is. And based on the board's feedback, we'll know whether or not to go forward with drafting an ordinance or not.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. This is pretty straightforward. You know, as Steve's mentioned, that Aurora was looking into this concept based upon work that Naperville had done. We actually did include Naperville's ordinance as part of this packet tonight, just for, as an example, as to what's been going on. As you, you'll notice in Naperville's ordinance, what they had done was they're limiting the sales, the retail sales of dogs and cats to animals that come from rescue organizations, humane societies, and animal control facilities. So what you'll find is that these retail environments, whether it be Pets Applies Plus or small pet stores, cannot sell dogs that are sourced from puppy mills, and they have specific processes of checking that. As of right now, the village of North Aurora, we do not have any businesses that, you know, that are involved in the retail sale of dogs and cats. So this might be a good time to introduce an ordinance like this, so we kind of proactively get that involved before we have an issue. I think a lot of the points of contention with those of the communities, Aurora and Naperville, is that they have existing pet stores that do sell animals that might be sourced from mills. So while the contention is, how do you, you know, provide sunset clauses and deal with existing businesses? We don't have that here, so it makes it a little more cleaner should the board choose to move forward in that direction. We did speak to the village attorney's office regarding our ability as a non-home rule community to license or restrict that, the sales. And we found that we would be able to engage in that conversation. Again, it would just be, in this case, limiting the sale of, in the retail environment, to animals that are sourced from rescue organizations, humane societies, and animal control facilities. Obviously, this is an open discussion. If there are any other questions or anything anyone else would like to add, now would be the time, and just to get some feedback if this is something the board wants to proceed with.
I, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
I, I had a couple, a couple questions. Our, our sale or pet stores, is that a permitted use in our regular zoning district?
Yeah, Mark, I believe it is. I can double check that. I believe it's under the, maybe the retail sales category.
Okay, so we, we need an ordinance because it wouldn't fall under a special use or anything. It's a permitted use, right? So they wouldn't have to come before the board?
Yeah, and I'll take a look at that.
I, I, I mean, I'm generally in favor of the Naperville ordinance. The only other thing, it, is there any way, would we be allowed to add a provision in there that any animal or any dogs, or I don't know, do you chip rabbits or cats? But that requiring chips be added?
I think that falls under the Kane County Animal Control Ordinance. I don't think that's something that's locally. I guess we could look into whether we could require it. I think it's already required under the county ordinance, and perhaps we can piggyback on that.
If the board is looking to bring back an ordinance, it'd be really easy to do that research. And then when we bring it back, we would just have that discussion at that time.
That would be my only two comments, and so I'm in favor of it.
And Mark, then looking at it, it looks like a pet store just falls under the general retail category as a permitted use.
I got a question.
Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. How does this apply to social media sales? I mean, it's like nowadays, anybody that's conducting any puppy sales or however, they, they go through a lot of social media, Facebook, and you name it. You know, I just pulled 14 cats out of a house. And obviously, they, they were in severe, severe stage. And no, it was quite a, quite a show, you know, so it, it's, it's all over, you know, in different areas. So I was just curious, how do we monitor, control people conducting those sales in social media? Would this apply to it?
I don't know how we would address the social media aspect of it. The way this is written, this would apply to resale, retail sales. You know, there are instances where we are breeders, and I don't believe this, anything like this would prohibit, you know, people from buying from breeders or private breeders as well. This would just govern the retail sales component in North Aurora.
I'm in favor of the Naperville ordinance, too. Just to let, I think we should be proactive on this. Save ourselves some trouble down the road, perhaps.
If you recall, this was brought up by me in the January meeting after talking to a couple of the aldermen in Aurora. They're looking at doing the ordinance. The thought was that, well, the Aurora was going to go ahead and pass an ordinance, that it might be a good idea for us to look at it for the fact that some of the companies may want to move to and sell their puppy mill animals here in North. So I think we need to do something so we don't get stuck without any type of protection. I do like Naperville's ordinance, but I know Aurora is still, they're still working on theirs. Perhaps we can, we can, you know, find something and combine them both together. I do think we needed to do.
I think that since we don't have any stores that are, are currently doing that, now is the time to jump in. That way, like, like you said, we don't have to then go back and rewrite something. And if, if residents can still buy directly from breeders, then I think that's fine. I would be in favor of it.
The intent tonight is just, once again, we'll get all the feedback that we're getting. We'll put it in an ordinance. But we would bring it back to the committee of the whole, so you'd actually see what that draft would be before it gets voted on.
Okay, great.
Very good.
We're all in support of it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, very good. Item four, ground floor minimum, Steve?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Here's a conversation regarding ground floor area minimums. This all came up a few months ago when we were going through the petition for Moose Lake Estates subdivision. And there was questions asked by the board and by some of the residents as to whether the village had a requirement or could require a minimum ground floor area for a house to be built. Specifically, we looked at the estate residential, which is what Moose Lake Estates is, is currently zoned. With that, Mike is going to take you through our research and a recent workshop we did with the planning commission.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Next slide, Dave. Thank you. Yeah, Steve had mentioned, this item was brought up last year as part of the Moose Lake Estates petition for the third annexation amendment. As you see in the, the presentation, which I included in the board packet last week, the village, we don't regulate the minimum size of residential buildings right now. What we do regulate is the maximum size. We do that through our bulk regulations, including our zoning ordinance. And each zoning ordinance, whether it be, or some each zoning classification, whether it be residential, commercial, industrial, is going to have a use classification pertaining to yard and bulk regulations. And by that, I mean setbacks, building height, FAR floor area ratio, and lot coverage. So we kind of set up this, this parameter for the, the maximum size through those sorts of provisions. I have seen some HOA North Aurora that do regulate the minimum size of the buildings. The issue with Moose Lake Estates is that they did not. So they had some of the issues that arose as part of the conversations with MI Homes. And as part of that conversation, too, was the board had directed staff to look at surrounding communities. So what we did is we took a somewhat comparable set of communities that we would look at in normal circumstances in the western suburbs, as you see on the screen. Four of those communities did, to some extent, regulate the minimum size for residential homes. And what they're going to be, we're calling it as a ground floor area minimum or, or an area minimum. They're, they're kind of a term that's used anonymously together. I don't want to get confused, but basically, we're just looking at the minimum size of a structure. Three of those communities, three of the four of those communities that did actually regulate them, did actually regulate them in their estate districts, that being Aurora, Montgomery, and Sugar Grove. Next slide, please. These are just some general definitions of ground floor area. Next slide, please. This is a little more, more telling. Now, when we talk about the, the ground floor area, the ground floor area would be, in this, in this depiction here, this diagram, would be floor area one. Again, that's regulating the, the amount of square footage that's on the, on grade at this point. And the definition sometimes will, you know, they'll exclude attached garages, porches, bree ways, things that aren't necessarily considered livable space. Some of the communities regulate, you know, floor area minimums, not ground floor ends, but this would also include the second floor, as, which is depicted on the diagram here as floor area two. And one of the items which we'll get into as well is the lot area. And why that's important is the lot area provides us with a ratio of how big the structure is in comparison to the level lot size or the minimum lot size, if you will. Next slide, please. Again, we're applying this to the estate districts. Moose Lake Estates is located in the E3 district with a 14,000 square foot lottery minimum. The village does have three E districts, the ER district, the E1 district, and the E3 district. As you see here, you know, ranging from three acres to the one acre estate district lot, which is the E1, and again, the E3 district. We did a GIS analysis, and we figured we have about 11% of the E3 lots that are remaining that are vacant right now, and those, you know, Moose Lake Estates, Autumn Ridge, maybe some in Tanner and Remington, Lake Run. Those are the subdivisions that comprise the majority of the E3 properties. And then the, the purpose of the district is to provide a transition zone between more dense residential zone districts and the estate district. So again, the E3 district is more of a transition or distance between larger estate lots and then, you know, maybe lots getting into your single family developed lots, maybe your R1 or R2. Next slide, please. This is an example of the analysis of what we'd found pertaining to the E districts. Again, North Aurora does not have a ground floor area or a floor area minimum in the E3 district or any of our residential districts. We had found Aurora in their E district, which, again, the E district for Aurora is a minimum lot size of 55,000 square feet, which is roughly an acre and a quarter. So it's, it's, it's quite larger than what we have in our E3 district. Now, for their, their minimum was the overall floor area, saying that, that a home had to be a minimum of 3,500 square feet. Again, that would include the ground floor, the second floor, however it pans out. But the minimum floor area for the E district in Aurora is 3,500 square feet. Montgomery in their ER district, which has a minimum lot area of 18,500 square feet, they have a ground floor area of 1,300 square feet. So if it's a ranch home, it'd have to be a minimum of 1,300 square feet. If it's a two-story home, it would have to have a floor area minimum of 2,400 square feet. Sugar Grove in their E1 district, which their E1 is respective of our E1 district, which is an acre lot of 43,560 square feet. This Sugar Grove is probably the only community that follows the ground floor area minimum as the pure definition. So when you look at these three numbers here divided by semicolons, is that the, what this says is that the ground floor, this always establishes a ground floor area minimum. So in this instance, if you have a one-story, a ranch home with a basement, the ground floor area or the area on grade has to be 20, or 2,000 square feet. If it's just a one-story resident without a basement, it would have to have 2,200 square feet. And if it was more than a, more than one-story residents, the ground floor area would have to be 1,500 square feet. So again, it's, Sugar Grove is establishing a base upon the earth that's on, at grade at this point, where others, they'll establish, you know, overall floor area minimum. Next slide, please. This is kind of a comprehensive analysis of what we had done. You'll see here that some of these communities did have, also have it in their R districts or the residential districts or single family districts. And they, and they do range, and they vary. So if you, if you just take a look, we did include the lot size and those floor area minimums. I believe Montgomery has, is just a good example of how that would compare to North Aurora. If you look at Montgomery's R1 district, they have a, a lot size of 14,000 square foot minimum, which is equal to our E3 district. Now, in Montgomery, in a 14,000 square foot lot, the ground floor would have to be 1,100 square feet. And if it was two-story residents, it would have to be a total of 1,800 square feet. So what this does is it kind of just gives you some examples of what some of their communities have done. You kind of want to look at it as, as a ratio, as how you move forward with this is, you know, what is the lot size? What is the actual size of the, maybe the homes in the surrounding area? What are some of the other communities requiring? We really haven't got into the minutia, the detail. What we had solicited with the planning commission was more or less just a question, is this something that they will move forward with? That's kind of the same thing we're looking from the village board tonight, not necessarily coming up with a magic number, but more or less is the village board, you know, how do they perceive this concept? Would they would like staff to move forward, and if so, in what fashion? Next slide, please. And we did solicit the planning commission on March 2nd. We did have a informal workshop session. When I did give them the same presentation as I'm giving right now. The planning commission feedback was basically, at this point, given the amount of vacant lots, the small size of availability of vacant lots, there was no compelling reason to move forward at this point. And also, too, it was sort of subjective as to what determining the, the livable standardization should be for the district itself. They weren't, they weren't comfortable moving forward with this, but if they, they said they were to move forward, that they would be comfortable maybe with a, a small number that would set some sort of minimum. So again, we're just looking for just some general feedback at this point. We would have to do further research if the board would want us to proceed as to what some of those, what some of those analysis and calculations would be for the respective of the E3 district. Now, I wouldn't recommend moving forward with any other district at this point, namely the R1 or R2, given the fact that it's primarily built out. And there, there can be ramifications with this, because if you get into, you know, if you're establishing lot size minimums, you might be conflicting with lot size maximums for those districts. So that's why I would, I would be a little apprehensive to move forward in the, in the R districts at this point. But just looking for some general feedback at this point in time, if anyone else has anything to add, that concludes the, the presentation.
Hey. Go ahead.
I spoke at once. Go, Al, you can, you can go ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I really like the idea of how they broke it down into different floors. I, I think that's a pretty good way to do it, you know, because then not everybody fits the same, the same mold, right? So you got ranch, you got a single story, two-story, or a basement. So I, I, I like that idea.
Yeah, the, the minimum size is a little easier.
I would say.
Sorry, Mark. Go ahead.
No, it's okay, buddy.
I was just going to say, when you get into the ground floor areas, it gets a little complicated. You can actually, you know, if the, looking to go in a certain direction would be to establish some sort of minimum floor area and overall square footage as opposed to ground floor. Those, there are different ways of looking at this.
We have, we have, I'm sorry, Steve, go ahead.
If the village board does want to pursue this, I remind you to go back to the Moose Lake conversations. And if I remember correctly, it wasn't just about the, the size of the actual first floor. In some cases, they were, the residents, the HOA, was okay with adding the, a garage or a third, a third car garage, because even though it's not living space, if the garage is included in a ground a third car garage because even though it's not living space, if the garage is included in a ground floor area, it makes the home look like it's bigger and fits the character of the neighborhood more in certain areas. So that's something else to think about too. If you want to pursue this, it's not always about the living space, it's about the structure itself.
Yeah, I was in going through this, I was kind of, a couple of points came out. One was, I think Kevin Drendel mentioned about a ratio or some kind of a relationship to the existing homes there. Could we make an ordinance like that to kind of protect there? It we're stuck between protecting the property values of the existing homes and at the same time trying to keep development moving forward and filling up these vacant lots. So I'm wondering if we could make it like a a formula perhaps, maybe, the square footage compared to lot size, but also relative to other homes in any given area. Is that possible?
It's it is possible. It's, there's a lot of detail in that. We started getting into having to look at building permits, looking at, you know, defining those living spaces, how each adjacent lot would compare, you know, if one, but if one, if you're adjacent to a vacant lot, what does that look like? If you're on a corner, what does that look like? It is, it is a little more challenging to examine. There's a lot of different variables that might be included in something like that as opposed to just setting some sort of minimum threshold. It's not to say it can't be done, but it just requires a lot more investigative work.
My my thought on the matter is this, is that this this was born out of the Moose Lake Estates. And so in the end, it 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 worked out just fine because that wasn't approved. And, you know, the board got to take a look at what was going to be built and it didn't really suit the needs of the neighborhood. And I think in one way, if you, and it is a complicated equation to come up with all these variables because of the lot size and all of that. And it it would, it may, it may, I'm suggesting that it may deter developers from looking at it. When, again, if you have a structure that's big with a three car garage, even though it's not lower space area, the issue was the overall look, if it's a big home, if it fits the neighborhood. So I maybe if you were to limit or, you know, dictate a minimum floor area, that might deter some developers from, you know, being interested in the development of their property, just my thought about it.
Yeah.
Well, I think that we need to have a ground floor minimum. I uh experienced with this builder, it wasn't a good one. I feel that that they they were even listening to what our concerns were or the people's concerns for that matter. So I think that we need to have a our state districts and project the the minimum. But I do think that we need to set some type of standards, particularly in that estate area.
I I agree with Mark, with Trusty Gately. I I think that the discussion, I I I respectfully disagree with the Planning Commission's feedback that there's no compelling reason. I think there's more of a compelling reason now. Back when Moose Lake was first built, for example, the builders came in with their plans, we knew what they were going to build. And we assumed they were all going to be consistent aesthetically in the neighborhood. Now we have a hundred and thirty one lots left. It's more important than ever that those lots are built to the standards of the existing homes. And here, if you remember the discussion we had, I'm not a hundred percent comfortable that we were allowed to turn them down. And we had, I don't know that we've heard the last from that building. So I would like to get something in place to protect the village in especially in this state. I liked the Montgomery, their floor, I know the lot size was bigger, it was eighteen thousand five hundred square feet, but the thirteen hundred first floor, twenty four hundred total square foot seemed like a reasonable minimum. And yes, it is going to deter builders, but hopefully it'll deter the builders that we don't really want building in those estate sized lots anyway. That's just my feeling.
I agree.
I completely agree with Krusty Carroll and Gately in terms of that. That's why I'm trying to come up with some general formula to kind of go forward with limiting or minimizing as some sort of uh square footage of each building, of each home. So that if the area has a certain average level of square footage homes, can we make some kind of an ordinance that might support that without? Well, yeah, that actually thinking out loud, thirteen hundred square foot of living space would be probably okay if they had the the garage along with, not counting the garage, I mean. You know, you don't want to add the garage to that. So I'd be comfortable with something like that in those in those types of areas where there are nice big homes that are aesthetically pleasing and roomy and maintain a pretty good property value.
One thing that we might do is a hybrid. So Mike has expressed some concern about the level of detail that would be required to impose a kind of sliding scale. But if it if we establish the the sliding scale based upon the average or median size of the houses in each development, because there's more than one. I think there may be three or more developments that have E three zoning districts, and they may not all require the same or or have the same range. In other words, I I get the impression that the Moose Lake lot houses may be different, for instance, than the Tanner Trails houses, perhaps. And if that's the case, we could set a subdivision wide standard based upon a sliding scale that Mike Lowry is suggesting that we wouldn't have to recalculate every time. It wouldn't be based necessarily on, you know, the houses that are next door, but it would be based on the houses in the entire development so that it would be a known standard and wouldn't have to be recalculated every time.
Yeah, so an average.
Yeah.
Yeah.
An an average of the square footage of the houses that are already existing. Because I I mean, when I was talking to some other people here at Tanner Trails, they had the same concern with some of the houses that were built in some of the empty lots. So I mean, I think in average, basically, that's what it sounds like based on the subdivision itself would be perhaps something more accurate.
Mike, is that something we can do? Michael?
Yeah, it's something we can certainly look into. It's just I'm a little, a couple of items that have just been listening in and and been processing this. Subdivision wide, maybe a little challenging, you're going to have, you know, quite a range in the in the model size homes. You know, I I think what happened too with the Moose Lake Estates and Kevin Krieger, if I'm wrong, but when we talk about these annexation agreements and applying these sorts of zoning ordinances and these provisions, the only thing I have a little concern about is how we're applying them uniformly to the entire vigil village and entirely the E three district. Because we do have existing annexation agreements that may or may not speak to this sort of thing. But if we're if we're applying something, you know, E three wide, it might have a little more general applicability. Kevin, does that make any sense? That did get brought up several times in our conversations regarding Moose Lake.
Yeah, we're we're basically talking about a a one formula for E three districts, but the formula is based upon the average houses in in the development. So the result could be different for, you know, if there's three, three E three districts, the formula could drive a different result in each development based upon the average size of the houses in each development, but it's the same formula. And in terms of the annexation agreements that apply, I think we were pretty careful in all of our annexation agreements to allow for zoning changes that were mun- municipal, you know, generally applicable or municipal wide. And and we're basically talking about a a, you know, theoretically, we're talking about a standard that would apply village wide, but it's a it's a flexible standard. So I think it I think it would fit within the parameters that we have in those annexation agreements for those districts and still allow, you know, by virtue of that formula, tailoring in in essence to each development.
Just just so we're clear, I want to make sure we're clear on this. I was under the impression when we were having our conversations that the Moose Lake annexation agreement specifically called out the code of, what was it, two thousand and three? And so I don't know, would would that still apply? Or when we talked about this internally, it sounded like it may not apply to Moose Lake for the year and a half that their annexation agreement is still in effect.
Well, there there are different, I think there's building code standards and then there's zoning standards and there's other things. We might have to take a look. I mean, it wouldn't be hard to look at the annexation agreements for the two or three or four districts that would be applicable. And and frankly, I think we're going to find that the language is very similar in each one. I don't think it would be too difficult to look at that.
Yeah, I don't think we had to come up with the, yeah, it sounds like there is support moving forward with the ground floor minimum or some sort of floor minimum at this point. So I think we can go back and kind of take a look and see what sort of options we have available. We've already been kind of toying with some of the ratios and looking at the surrounding communities on how that applies. You know, with regards to their lot size minimums and how their what their minimum floor areas or ground floor areas might be. We've been toying with some of those numbers as percentages as a means of doing it. I I I think that the the, looking at the subdivision averages, we'd have to find a way of doing that and finding that information because they can range quite vastly. I don't, when these developments are approved, some of mine might not have an actual model schematic of what the of the of each model and what their square footages are. I'm not sure if that's looking at the assessors information or what sort of origin we'd get that information from other than a building permit. But we will take a look at several different things. We've been, you know, obviously been monitoring this since we, you know, we're having this discussion regarding music last year. So Dave Hanson put together a lot of great information here and we can just kind of keep moving forward with it. This is something that the village board wants to just take a look at, which it sounds like it is. We can come back and have, you know, more informal discussions as need be with some potential solutions.
I have one other question. This would apply to destroyed homes as well, right? In those E E three districts, it's not just a hundred and thirty one lots.
There's there's a, there's a few things that you have to be careful of. You have to be careful with nonconformities, meaning that if you have an existing home and that home didn't meet that certain threshold and it were damages destroyed beyond fifty percent of its means, they would then have to be brought in conformity. So if you have an existing home, that is a certain square footage and it has to be rebuilt, that could present itself as being nonconforming. There are ways of looking at the language and saying that the code would apply as of a certain date. So there are there are remedies for that. Also too, some of the, you know, negative impacts I've read, you know, just in general planning literature is the fact that this can be viewed as somewhat exclusionary housing, meaning that you're you're trying to create a certain a certain minimum threshold, not just in size, but in the value of the homes. So I I did mention that during the Plan Commission as well, so I want to mention that tonight.
I think the interesting thing is when you look at the existing districts that we, or excuse me, the existing subdivisions that we have where there are empty lots, there are, it's kind of arranged. They aren't, even though they're all a state, I mean, Moose Lake is very similar to Lake Run, probably in the size of housing. Autumn Ridge only has one house built in the entire subdivision. And so I mean, and Tanner Trails is almost completely built out, but you know, I would say, I don't know, oftentimes I had the average house size, it's going to be a little bit smaller than maybe Moose Lake's, but still decent size. Ultimately, I think that the board is looking at this, the right approach is the probably right size based on a formula. Because if you're going to have a wide range of homes in in the estate districts, you're going to want to do it so that it's equally fair to everybody. So what I think we would do at this point is, it sounds like there's support from the board that you want to move forward with something. What we could do at the staff level is before even drafting anything and bringing the Plan Commission, I would adventure that Mike and I will sit down, we'll try to come up with something that we think the board might like and bring it back to the cow first. Have the village board review a draft proposal of what we put together, make changes to whatever, you know, get feedback from that and then take that to the Plan Commission. Mike, does that sound like the path you would go?
Yeah, I think that, you know, with the board's direction that, you know, as opposed to asking the Plan Commission whether or not it's something we move forward with is more or less having to unroll up their sleeves and take a look at it and use them as another sounding board. I think that's important. So, yeah, I definitely agree.
Okay, any other comments? I just want to add, I think, you know, we do owe it to the residents who bought in there to come up with something fair for, you know, for everyone there. So I I do like the sliding scale or that idea of, you know, because maybe thirteen hundred square feet would not work in one area, but maybe would with a garage, you know, satisfy the needs of another subdivision. So if we run right track, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just say that, I I mean, I would agree that, you know, I went through Moose Lake Estates and I can completely understand what the residents are talking about and they want it finished so that the aesthetic is the same. And I completely agree with that. I just didn't know whether there might be another way to accomplish that. But the formula seems like if you're going to, you're going to take an average of all the homes and then you're going to apply a formula, then maybe that works.
All right, anything else? Anybody? All right, last item, budget follow up. Steve?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. The last item on the agenda is the follow up from our last committee, the whole meeting, where we presented the draft fiscal year two thousand twenty one, twenty two budget. Basically, this is just us bringing back to show the the draft budget to show any modifications that were made since that March meeting. And we are on pace to have the budget formally adopted on May third.
Any thoughts or discussion?
Very good.
No, Bill.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yes, as Steve said, we had the draft committee, the whole discussion for the budget. Three weeks ago, we discussed a lot of items concerning personnel changes, vehicles, equipment, capital improvements and revenue outlook. At this point in time, we have just a few minor changes that we're accumulating. We're still gathering additional input from departments. They're really minor at this point, mainly clarifications or revenue changes as far as an adjustment for income tax revenue for next year due to the extension of the filing deadline from April fifteenth, May fifteenth. Some adjustment adjustments to the revenues expected from our TIF funds, as we got some final numbers for those. So we'll present a final list of all the changes in two weeks at the next public hearing for the budget. In the meantime, we had this on the agenda tonight to see if there's any questions or follow up from the meeting three weeks ago. And here, any further input? I think our overall financial outlook remains the same. There hasn't been any significant changes that we would recommend making any significant adjustments at this point.
None here.
Nope, none here either.
Very good, Bill.
Yep, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Yeah, I thought I thought it was great.
Okay, I think that's it for our agenda. No exact session, so I'm working to adjourn.
Move. Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, good night, everybody.